All right, mark your calendars for Saturday, July 21st for Level Up, a community-wide celebration of Wichita's birthday, which will transform a normal parking garage at 215 South Market into a day-long celebration of Wichita's artists and unique businesses. Looking ahead at the agenda, today, the mayor and council will receive and file the comprehensive financial report, discuss the approval of two central standard community events, and look at the 2019 budget and capital improvement program. For the latest Wichita news, we encourage you to connect with us on Facebook, Twitter, or YouTube, and Cox Channel 7. Good morning, Mayor Longwell and City Council.
Thank you, Megan Lovely. And welcome to all of you that have joined us today. We will call this meeting to order, and with us today is Officer Charlie Davidson of the Wichita Police Department that's going to provide an invocation. Following that, we will have a pledge of allegiance, and we invite all of you to join us for both of those. Charlie, great to have you this morning.
Good morning. Let's bow our heads as we pray this morning. God, thank you for this time that we have to come together, and thank you for this beautiful rain that we've received this morning that we so much desperately needed. And Lord, just thank you for being in control of our lives, being in control of everything that we are and everything that we do. And Lord, I pray that as we bring this business, Lord, we keep you in our thoughts on our hearts as we continue to work through the business of this city, of this great city. Lord, help us to build this city on your principles. Help us to build this city according to your principles. I pray that you continue to give wisdom to our city leaders, our city government, our department directors, as they continue to work each and every day, day in and day out, to make this a great city for citizens who come here to live, to work, or just to enjoy the amenities of this great place. We just pray all this, and lift this up to you, and pray this this morning, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. It's always good to see you. We have approval of the minutes of July 10th. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of July 10th, 2018.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion, cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, you want to call the next item?
Toni Pitchford, Kansas U.S. Census Data Dissemination Specialist.
Ms. Toni? I'm not sure Toni is here. No Toni. All right. Madam Clerk, I guess the next person.
Kathy Camden, Parks, Pools, and Policing.
And no Kathy today. We're 0-for-2. Let's try our third.
Denise Irwin, Full Funding of City Arts in Upcoming Budget.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Denise Irwin. I live at 12638 East Zimmerly Court here in the city. I am a retired arts educator and a full-time artist. I'm here to encourage full funding of city arts in the upcoming budget. When asked where to go in Wichita, city arts galleries have always been the top of the list. City Arts offers visitors a diverse selection of artwork on a monthly basis with an emphasis on new trends in contemporary art. City Arts is one of the few galleries in Wichita that maintains regular business hours six days a week. City Arts exhibits between 100 and 200 local and regional artists each and every year. It is a location to see the excellent art being produced in our city. Under the direction of Emily Brookover and her crew, the Galleries of City Arts, Century 2, and the council offices in City Hall have drawn the best artists to exhibit in these spaces. This has not always been the case under previous management. The result has seen an increase, not only in attendance, but in sales. They need the time and freedom to continue this recognition and expansion for the benefit not only of the city, but also the artists. The 500 educational classes and their 6,000 to 7,000 registrations go hand in glove with the gallery spaces. Seeing and talking about art on display enhances the educational processes. Without funding for the galleries, this aspect would go away. During the school year, City Arts schedules and provides nearly 100 specialized field trips to schools in and around Wichita. Cultural organizations such as City Arts is crucial to the growth of Wichita. On Final Friday, City Arts sees an average of 600 persons. City Arts is a centerpiece of Final Friday along with strong showings in our private galleries. Not only does City Arts host 40 exhibits per year, they also provide a sales outlet to 50 to 100 artists each year through the boutique. We, as a city, must see full funding of city arts not as subsidizing of the arts, but as an investment toward the economic growth of our city. But now, let's talk about money because that's why we're really here today. It is my understanding, and I know that the budget is a fluid document, that City Arts is looking at a cut in their $700,000 budget of $100,000 to $300,000. This is a cut of 14.3%, up to 42.6%. And let's consider this. They bring in approximately $308,000 in fees. They generate back 44% of their budget. Now, let me say that again. The hard-working folks at City Arts are able to give back to the city 44% of their budget. This amazing number has been growing in recent years, due in large part to Kay Blair and Emily Brookover's guidance toward the goal of 50% recovery set by Mr. Layton. Let's also note that the Arts Council of Wichita takes all of the profits from the gallery and boutique. City Arts gets none of the sales from the galleries or the boutique. So City Arts has a budget of $700,000, of which $308,000 is rolled back. The city of Wichita has a budget last year of $586 million. Do the math. City Arts' total budget is 1/10th of 1% of the total city budget. A tiny drop in a very large bucket, council persons, mayor, city manager, one drop. Yet, the impact on the cultural life of Wichita would be immense. The cuts would produce no effect in the overall budget, and yet it would crush a major engine of Wichita arts and tourism development. I call on the council members, Mayor Longwell, the city manager Layton, to fully fund city arts and to continue the growth of our arts community for the benefit of the citizens of Wichita, the visitors to Wichita, and the artists of Wichita. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Again, I don't believe Kathy Camden or Toni Pitchford has arrived, so we will move on through our agenda then. Madam Clerk, you want to call the next item, please?
Consent agenda items 1 through 23.
We have consent agenda items 1 through 23 that includes a housing item, and I think we have Andrew Martin with us today if Andrew wants to come up. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled for clarification or Seeing none, I would move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 23 that include the housing items 20 and 21. Andrew will ask you to record your vote by voice, and we will record our vote by electronic method. That motion to approve the consent.
Second.
We have motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 8-0. Andrew, thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Grant application title 16, Water Reclamation and Reuse Projects.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alan King, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Like to bring before the council for their consideration a grant application from the Bureau of Reclamation for work to be done on improving our ASR and to achieve our drought resiliency goals. The city's aquifer storage and recovery project, ASR, takes water out of the little Arkansas River, treats it to drinking water standards, and puts it into the Equis Aquifer so that at some point in the future it can be withdrawn. This is a critical part of our drought resiliency strategy. Sometime ago, the council approved a drought resiliency target of a 1% drought, meaning that a drought that we would expect to happen every 100 years. The 1930's Dust Bowl drought would be an example of such a drought, and we've been working to achieve that drought resiliency. In most years, we have more than enough water. We actually will spill water out of Cheney Reservoir. It's those drought years that we're trying to prepare for. So what we need to do is we need to achieve that through additional infrastructure at the ASR, and there is federal funding, not a loan, but actually grant money that's available for that purpose. Originally, council approved $70 million, about 70.1, I believe, million dollars to make improvements out of the ASR, considered an ASR Phase 3, to achieve this drought resiliency. It consisted of 18 bank storage wells, wells that are actually drilled into the banks of the little Arkansas River, two recharge basins, places where the water could be dumped into to soak back into the aquifer, recharge and recovery wells, piping that's necessary to make this all happen, and the necessary supporting power, electrical, and communications infrastructure. We'd also have to acquire some additional land that we don't presently have to make that happen. We estimate the cost of this to be $48,500,000. As you can see, that's a number that's lower than the $70 million that the council previously approved, and incidentally is in the budget and supported by existing rates. One of the reasons why is we're learning more about the performance of the aquifer. We also have come up with some different approaches which we think are more cost-effective, and we are also looking at reducing this number even more if we are able to, if we're successful in changing the city's ASR water permit. The Bureau of Reclamation, they have what they call a Water Smart Program. It allows up to 25% of cost-sharing in projects like this. It only covers qualifying costs through September of 2020, so you can apply for a project, but it's only going to pay for those costs that are actually incurred during that time. That coincides with the window of a first phase of these improvements that we're talking about. The application for this grant is July 27th. This requires council resolution to authorize the grant application. So what we're talking about is what kind of work can we get done in the time that would be eligible for this grant, and is that work going to be necessary even if we are successful in getting the permit modifications at ASR? There's a certain amount of improvements we're going to have to make even if we are successful in that permit mod. And so what we identified was what work would that be, and would it fit into the window for the grant work schedule? So the work that we're looking at is the design permitting and construction of three bank storage wells, design permitting and construction of one recharge basin, the design and construction of the collection piping that makes that necessary, and the necessary power and electrical support for it, and then design of six additional bank storage wells. The idea being that we would have a total of nine bank storage wells, but we wouldn't be able to acquire that land and drill those wells during the time that the permit or the grant would be eligible, those costs would be eligible. And so we go ahead and do that work, which we could fit into there, which would be the design. The total amount of work that we're talking about is $12,493,000. So of that $12 million, the city would fund $9 million of that, and this grant would pay for $3 million of that. And so that's the idea, is for us to proceed in a way that we know we're going to need for improvements that we know we're going to need, and to look for federal grant money to help us in the expenses associated with that. So our recommendation to council is that they approve the grant application so that we can submit it. The grant application can be submitted after the city is successful in their paperwork, submitting the detailed information, technical information associated with the project. That has been done. It has been approved, and they go through what's called a surnaming process, which puts it in a register, which now makes it an eligible project. That's all been successfully completed, so the only thing that remains is for us to actually make the grant application. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Alan, just a reminder for people that the money to pay for this comes from the water and sewer feeds, not from the general fund.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. So, follow-up on what Mayor just said. So, we've been looking at last week and even before, the anticipated rate increases over the next immediate term and long term. Was this calculated in those?
Yes, sir. This is already covered with existing rates that we have now. The rates have already been increased to cover the $70 million, and it is in our budget, so there would be no additional rate increases to cover the funding that we are looking at here. Probably what we will be able to do is to achieve our drought resiliency target with less than the budgeted rate covered, $70 million.
Okay. My last question is, you make reference to local and state stakeholders endorsing the application, and I see in the back you've got some great letters and anticipated letters from our federal people, the governor, the senators. Is it worth us asking if, since we supply water to, what is it, 13 communities around here besides Wichita? Are they supportive of this? Would they be willing to write a letter? Is it too late? I would think Derby-
It is not too late. We have up until the 27th to submit the application. I'm not sure, but I think Derby, one of the people that, one of the larger outside-city customers, is included in that letter of support for the project.
And I don't know if they even are allowed to, but it'd be nice if McConnell Air Force Base would support this as well.
Absolutely.
I don't know who does that, who reaches out, but...
Let us look and see if that's feasible within the time that we have, but that would certainly be a good addition to our permit, to our application.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention that this grant opportunity is something that has come out of the work that we do with our Washington representative, Jim Davenport. If you remember, this wasn't even on our radar a couple of years ago. All of you have visited with representatives of Bureau of Reclamation to talk about the importance of this regional water opportunity, and because of that, he has obtained the congressional support that's necessary. Alan, Don Henry, and their team have spent an enormous amount of time getting the feasibility study to the point where it's now been approved by the Bureau of Reclamation, which is what we needed to be eligible for this funding. So this is $3 million that if we receive it, actually will be $3 million less in rates that we'll need from Wichita residents as well as those in the region that we supply. And I think is a great show of the reason why having representation in Washington can be beneficial to the city.
That's awesome. Any other questions? Thank you, Alan. We'll go out to the community. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Any further discussion? It is a great opportunity, and as the manager mentioned, is one of the big reasons that we have gone out and hired a Jim Davenport for the, what, third year now? And I've been very happy with opportunities that he's finding for us in Washington, D.C. We now know it kind of takes a person that can navigate the system a little bit to help us. And so if there's no other questions, I would move that the city council approve the grant application and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Sean Henning, Director of Finance. The item for your consideration this morning is the 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We commonly refer to that as the CAFR. It's a report that's prepared every year and provides the audited financial statements of the City of Wichita. Here today to provide a presentation and communicate the results of the external audit of the city's financial statements is Mike Lowry, Senior Vice President of Assurance Services with Allen Gibson-Hulick. Following the presentation, the recommended action of the City Council is to receive and file the 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and Mike and I would be available to answer any questions you have. So at this time, I'll have Mike communicate his results to you.
Mike Lowry with Allen Gibson-Hulick. We were engaged to audit the 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the single audit in accordance with Uniform Guidance. Before I get started, I would just like to give a big thank you to Sean Henning and the finance staff for their work during preparation of the audit. It's a huge undertaking, and they do that in addition to their daily work. And they're always very organized, and we really appreciate that, and it helps the audit go very smoothly here. The CAFR includes the audited financial statements of the city. Kansas statutes do require that the city receive an annual audit, and it is conducted by my firm, Allen Gibson-Hulick, which we are the city's external auditors. Some of the CAFR highlights, and I think you've received a copy of the new published version for 2017, the introductory section, the financial section, which includes the auditor's opinion, management's discussion and analysis, and then the financial statements. It also includes in the back the statistical section. I will point out that the city did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of an opinion that you can receive during an audit. The city did implement two new accounting standards. That's GASB Statement Number 74 and Numbers 81. We had an opportunity to visit earlier, and while the city did implement those GASBs, they had minimal impact on the city's financial statements this year. We had no financial statement findings for the audit, and we had no proposed audit adjustments, which is, I will point out, a great reflection on the accounting staff, that we had no audit adjustments this year. We also encountered no disagreements, difficulties, or significant issues during the audit with management. I always like to point out, there are three goals for any audit. Did the city comply with all laws and regulations? Were internal controls in place, but more importantly, did they work? And do the financial statements accurately reflect the books and records? And I'm happy to report that the answer to all three of those questions is yes. As I mentioned, in addition to the audit of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, we also conduct a single audit. A single audit is required for any non-federal entity that spends $750,000 in grant expenditures in one year. The major programs that we reviewed this year were the Home Investment Partnership Program, the Housing Voucher Cluster Program, or Section 8, and then the Federal Transit Cluster. All three of those programs as well received an unmodified audit opinion. I need to catch up here. And the summary of auditor results are in the CAFR, located at page I-10. I will point out that the council has, audit standards require that we report certain matters related to the audit, and we do that via a governance letter and/or required communications. I always like to point out that that is a reminder that while we work with management to complete the audit, we work for the governing body, and that the mayor and city council, we did have an opportunity to go over that letter in detail when you received it. With that, I'll stand for questions. Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Does anyone from the council have any questions for him? Seeing none, at this point, we will take it out to the public for any comments or questions. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the bench. Again, I want to thank you and your firm for the excellent work. We had a good conversation, the mayor and I, with you, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the report. So seeing no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that we receive and file the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further comment. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes 6-0. Again, thank you, Sean, and your team as well. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
CSB Taco Invitational, Community Event with Alcohol Consumption.
Did you bring tacos?
I did not. I apologize. Breakfast tacos. Mayor of Council, Vice Mayor of Council, John DeAngelo, Arts and Cultural Services. Central Standard Brewery on Greenwood has applied for a community event permit for August 5th. Street closure request was on your July 10th agenda. Area businesses and residents have been notified of their event. The code requires a resolution authorizing consumption of alcohol or liquor in public streets. The proposed head includes the streets in and around their area business. Staff has reviewed this application and the consumption of alcohol and finds it meets the criteria. This is aerial, the location that they propose with the street closures. Sorry, I jumped through that pretty quick. Again, if you have any questions, I'm standing for those.
None. We'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Any discussion? Is this Councilmember Johnson's?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
You want to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I would move that the council adopt a resolution to allow alcohol consumption upon sidewalks of public streets within the parameters outlined in the community event application during the CSB Taco Invitational Event, August 5th, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
CSB Three-Year Anniversary, Community Event with Alcohol Consumption.
Again, Mayor, John DeAngelo, Arts and Cultural Service. Again, Central Standard Brewery is having another event on August 25th, which is their three-year anniversary. The street closure request, again, was before you on July 10th. Area businesses and residents have been notified. The code requires the resolution authorizing the consumption of alcohol. We have reviewed, staff has reviewed the application. Again, here's the location, very similar to the last item on your agenda, again, for their anniversary party. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Questions? None. We'll go out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Again, we'll turn it over to Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move the council adopt the resolution to allow alcohol consumption upon sidewalks and public streets within the parameters outlined in the community event application during the CSB Three-Year Anniversary Event, August 25th, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Century Two Digital Signage Upgrade.
Again, Mayor, John DeAngelo. What's before you today is the approval of the selection to award the digital sign contract to NEXT LED signs. Century Two is a multifunctional facility, multiple halls that are utilized. We have three exterior screens that we use for marketing of upcoming events, current events. The current screens are outdated. They were purchased in '08, and they have continued to experience failures. We continue to work with the contractor, but they're becoming obsolete. Here's a couple images that you can see either total blackout or areas of blackout. Some of this is caused by heat, but also just because of the equipment. The new screens will offer additional marketing opportunities for events and promoters. Utilizing the Scala software, which is found throughout the city hall as well as other places within the city, will allow us to put this information on multiple screens, and we're able to control it. These are proposed images of what it could look like. I will say that the sign on Kennedy Plaza will also have the ability to have sound, and if we wanted to do an event and show a short film, there would be the opportunity for it to be event space. The interior screens will allow further marketing opportunities in the individual halls. Currently, in Concert Hall, we have screens. Basically, this proposal puts screens in all the halls. It also allows for us to address weather concerns if that occurs during an event and provide information to our clients. These are examples of the screens that are in Concert Hall. NEXT LED was selected to provide this. The selection process was done in October. Scala software will be provided by Digital Medias of Kansas. Wiring work will be completed by Shelley. The total cost of the exterior signage is $90,000. The interior signage is $59,500, and then the wiring is $20,000. This is funded through a CIP process and through our CIP program. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Vice Mayor.
John, just what's your timeline on this? How soon can we expect to see the new signage up and operational?
We're hoping to have them up by the end of this year, so that by spring of next year, we could actually make better use of them.
Okay. Thank you.
We can't have it up by next week?
Probably not. But we'll work on it.
Don't be afraid to push them. We'll take it out to the audience. Anyone like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. I don't see anyone that has any other questions or concerns, so I would move that we approve this election and award the Century Two exterior and interior signage contract to NEXT LED signs.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item.
2019 Annual Operating Budget and 2018 to 2027 Capital Improvement Program.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I feel like I ought to have this budget sponsored by Central Standard Brewing, the way the agenda has gone. I'm going to present to you today the recommended 2019, 2020 operating budget, and then the 2018 through 2027 CIP. This is the first step in the formal adoption of both of those documents. Whenever we sit down to work on the budget, we establish objectives that we want to achieve to stay consistent with council policy. The first, of course, is to align with our mission. The mission was adopted by the city council. Significant emphasis has been placed on service excellence and moving us in that direction and right sizing the budget so that we can do that in areas that are expected from the public, primarily public safety, street maintenance, and some of our other basic service areas. Also, the plan needs to be sustainable. We need to recognize trends that we'll face in the future and make sure that we'll position ourselves to be able to address any concerns on the horizon. And of course, most importantly, to engage stakeholders that have a lot to do with or relate to the services that we provide. I will remind you that, if I go back to those objectives, one of the things that we didn't put in there was that the council wanted to be a little more involved in the policy direction of the document, and I've been here for nine years, and each year, we tried to get better at that. This year, you had three different retreats to set some policy direction for us as we put the document together, and I wanted to remind you that that laid the framework for some of the recommendations that are in the current document. This is where we are today in terms of our financial forecast, and this is before the adoption of the budget. We knew that as we went into 2019, we have about a $1.4 million deficit that we'd have to address, and that deficit would grow through 2022 if we didn't take appropriate steps in the 2019 and 2020 budgets. If you remember, during the retreats, the last two retreats, we spent time talking about our zero-based budget approach and refining that in a way that would make it even more meaningful. Last year, when we talked about zero-based budget, we spent a lot of time talking about core activities and support activities. What we wanted to do was drill down even deeper and talk about, from a citizen's perspective and from your perspective, what's untouchable in this budget and what's touchable. We also wanted to make sure that we had significant citizen input on those touchables and untouchables. And we'll remind you that not only did we hit the district advisory boards and do some of the other things that we've done in the past, but we had an enhanced social media town hall, which I think was our most successful to date. Here are some of the results in terms of just the comments, reactions, and reach from Social Media Town Hall. When I arrived here, we had, our outreach was talk to the dabs and have a public hearing here in the council chambers. We'd be lucky if we had 10, 15 people, maybe. If you look at our reach now, we have 134,000 people that commented or at least looked at the budget issues and reacted. As you saw here, almost 800 people submitted reactions and another 900 submitted comments. And that was very helpful because it actually did shape some of the recommendations that are included in this document, especially in the area of school resource officers and street sweeping, which were two items that we were looking at spending or reducing expenditures and are not as a result of those recommendations or those comments. Here is the pie chart that shows where our dollars are generated and where they're spent for the total budget, which is now over $600 million. Not surprising, charges for services is our greatest revenue source, and that's because utilities are included in the total operating budget, and if you look at, excuse me, as well as debt service, which I'll talk about in a second. Property tax is 19% of our total revenue for the entire budget. If you look over on the right-hand side, you'll see that salaries and benefits are the primary expenditure item for the entire budget, but debt service takes up a significant portion as well. Let's talk more about the general fund budget because this is what our residents really look at when they talk about how we finance our city operations on a day-to-day basis. Our primary revenue source for the general fund is property tax. That has not changed over the last 10 years or longer. You'll also see franchise fees represent 20% of our revenue, sales tax 12%, and lesser amounts for the others. On the expenditure side, two pie charts here. One that shows the basic service areas and the, if you look at police, fire, and public works, which relate to those core services, council has identified over and over again as our top priorities, 83% of the total general fund budget goes into those three service areas. Mayor and I were talking yesterday about the chart on the right, and this gives you an idea of how, why it's so difficult to balance the budget during difficult times, and that's because 73% of our total expenses are tied up in salaries and benefits. and benefits. So what are some of the things that are included in the budget? Well, one of the things that you spend a lot of time talking about was the police staffing plan and how we would move forward with that plan. And since you're considering the capital improvement program, at the same time you're considering the operating budget, you looked at that total revenue opportunity and you said, we're going to shift a mill from the CIP in order to be able to fund the first phase of the police staffing plan. And that's three point two million dollars that's moving over into the operating budget to fund twenty-one new commission positions, eleven new civilian positions, plus equipment that's necessary in order to be able to roll out that additional staffing. A reminder, some of those civilian positions will be involved in as community service officers to relieve some of the administrative burden from the patrol officers that are on the street. And then also, we'll have data analysts that allow us to do more analytical work and predictive police work. We've spent a lot of time also talking about a new deployment model for fire, and we're recommending that that be rolled out in a phased approach. The idea is to focus our existing resources, our firefighters on firework and the primary emergency medical response work, and that for those low acuity calls, that we shift from burdening the firefighters with that work to actually having that work performed by civilians. As I mentioned, we'll be phasing that in. We believe that it will be basically revenue neutral, meaning that we'll not see any major change in our budget as a result of this change. But again, we're going to prove that concept in two thousand and nineteen, and then if we're successful with that model, continue to roll that out in two thousand and twenty.
Bob, clarify that a little bit.
Yes.
Because they would also receive specialized training when you say that civilians would be responding to low acuity calls. They would still receive EMT training?
That's correct, yes. These are professionals in that respect. They are just not uniform personnel.
They're just, they're not going to receive training to fight fires, but they will receive training to for medical calls.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
All right.
Also, going back to your priorities, we are continuing to try to bolster what we do with street maintenance. You are currently funding between the capital improvement program and the operating budget, eight million dollars a year for residential, primarily residential reconstruction and rehabilitation of our streets. That would go to ten million in two thousand and nineteen and rise to eleven million in two thousand and twenty. Just a reminder, we also have taken ten million dollars out of the higher proceeds to improve the condition of our residential streets as well. Some adjustments that we've recommended in this budget. First of all, the closing of the Linwood branch in two thousand and nineteen. That's to coincide with the opening of the advanced learning library, looking at the statistics that were generated from the branch study that was conducted this last year and seeing that the Linwood branch is the one that has probably the smallest numbers in terms of visitors and highest number of current users that indicate that they are willing to use the downtown library, the new advanced learning library. We're also looking at some alternatives for the Evergreen branch in two thousand and twenty, but nothing has been decided in that regard at this time. Looking at two other strategic adjustments that talk about partnerships. The first is talking is bringing in a partner group to operate our animal shelter and to try to implement that in two thousand and nineteen. Hopefully, by the mid-year, we'll have that well organized, like to do even earlier than that if at all possible. If the council approves this budget, we'll start meeting with the rescues and others that have a stake in the shelter and talk about the structure to successfully operate that facility. We'll continue to subsidize that facility, but the idea is to reduce the amount of subsidy because of the work being done by our partner. And then also in terms of city arts, looking at trying to develop a partnership there for the operation of the gallery and of the boutique. Intend that we will continue to offer all of the classes that are currently offered and of course, expand programming if necessary. And those will be with city employees or with instructors that are financed by the city. I mentioned that the social media town hall helped shape our thinking on some issues. At one point, we had talked about the school resource officer program, had talked about how it had appeared to stray from its original mission after some discussions with the school superintendent as well as the chief, and then getting really good feedback during social media town hall, decided what we needed to do is just revamp the program, not look at eliminating the school resource officers in the schools, but look more towards their role as mentors, as teachers, and also as part of the process of restorative justice that superintendent is trying to introduce into the high schools. We had also talked about reducing our level of street sweeping in two thousand and nineteen. We heard loud loudly from our residents that they didn't want us to do that, so that is still our current street sweeping service levels will exist in two thousand and nineteen as well. Because of financial challenges, we still need to talk about this and review the issue again for two thousand and twenty. But at this point, we are not changing anything that we're currently doing as we had going into two thousand and nineteen. And then again, to balance the budget, we have frozen the cultural grants and institutions funding at the two thousand and eighteen levels. Another strategic initiative, one that I believe strongly in, is taking all of the dollars that we currently put in economic development and funneling those through the partnership. Partnership is working on three different initiatives to help develop a strategic plan for economic development activities here in the metropolitan area, actually in the region. And instead of us, I hate to use this phrase, but picking winners and losers, so to speak, into that game and doing so in a way that's less than strategic, we'd like to go ahead, increase our funding for the partnership, and then let them determine how outside agencies will play into the implementation of a regional economic development strategy. We also would like to get closer to cost recovery for our economic development programs that we offer through the city and do that through some fees. We're currently talking to representatives of the partnership and will also visit with the development community before we bring a final recommendation to you. But we did talk about that a little bit in the retreat and got some guidance from you in that regard. And then in two thousand and twenty, we're going to talk about maybe the possible different funding strategy for Cowtown, also for the Mid-American Indian Center, and for Botanica. And the idea is to maybe get closer to the model that's currently being followed for the art museum, and that is where we get, we may get out of the staffing business, but instead, we'll subsidize their operations and give the boards of those organizations a little more control over their operations. But we'll do that in discussions with those groups and hopefully find a model that will work. And then if we look outside the general fund, the one fund I did want to talk about that you're all very familiar with is the golf fund. We know at this point that we are financially challenging the golf fund, and the park board has prepared a recommendation to close Clapp Golf Course. This budget reflects that recommendation. I know there'll be some discussion, especially when we approach the public hearings on the future of that course as well as the golf system. So you will have your first public hearing on the budget on August seventh, and then we'll ask you to formally adopt it on August fourteenth. Mayor, I also have a presentation on the CIP, but if you'd like, I can stop here for any questions on the operating budget.
So let's pause there for a second. Before we get into the CIP, any questions so far on this? Councilmember Clint Ennam.
So, Bob, I appreciate, I know there's a lot of work that goes into this. We've had a lot of, you've had a lot of feedback from us. The one thing that I don't think I've talked too much about is the Linwood Branch Library. I know that just came out in the study. I would say if you go into that branch, services are not near what you would see at some other parts. It's probably the reason why it's so, there's such low attendance. Is there a plan to provide services farther southeast? Because right now southeast, there's nothing.
Right.
And you're in one of the poorest areas that don't have transportation to our downtown library or the advanced learning library. Are we going to take a look at how we deploy those services to other areas of the city? I even know the Comatera branch up in northeast is closing due to Dylan's not redoing there. So are we going to look at how we deploy services to make sure everybody's getting?
I think what we probably need to do is drill down a little deeper into the users of Linwood because if I remember correctly, I believe it was about sixty percent of the users said that they were more than willing to also be users of the advanced learning library. And that was compelling information when we were developing this recommendation. So there may be a misconception on who actually is using that library. That's, you know, we, I think that's an interesting policy issue that the council will want to address this next year, and that is to, you know, at least continue to discuss what the role of the branch libraries is as we've made substantial investment in the advanced learning library in order to really change the way that people learn from, you know, cradle to grave basically here in the community. And we provide opportunities and resources in that facility that we can't duplicate anyplace else. So then what is the role of the branch library? What is it that we're trying to achieve? Now, the branch study did a really nice job of talking about who currently uses it and making some recommendations on how we could strategically reposition those libraries. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why I said I hesitated to talk about closing Evergreen as the next step. Financially, that would help us, but I'm not sure strategically that's necessarily what we want to do. But there may be a way to restructure that branch to better serve the community that is identified in that branch study. With Linwood, it was such a small presence and such a small number of people and so many of them willing to use, you know, our key resource, the advanced learning library, we hadn't looked at an alternative.
I'm not necessarily disagreeing about Linwood closing. I think that that, I think the branch study did a good job of identifying where people wanted to go. It just had a lack of available technology and those sorts of resources that I know that the advanced learning library is providing people. It may just be as simple as figuring out transportation. So I just think that's my biggest concern and that I'll be looking for in the future, so.
Councilmember Plakom.
Yes, and I just want to kind of reiterate what the manager said so that we understand. You know, we're investing at Evergreen, a million dollars in the renovation and expansion of the Neighborhood Resource Center, and we really want to look at that entire campus. And I think you alluded to that, that not just saying, okay, we're going to close that library, because I think the things that we're looking at doing at that neighborhood center with the rec center and the library, there might just be some good changes we could make to that to get the savings that we're looking for.
And we've talked about maybe being more targeted in what we offer at that branch, and some of that space that's currently occupied by the branch could actually accommodate some of the uses that you're talking about that would have required reconstruction or new construction otherwise.
Couple of questions, Bob.
Yes.
When will we get information from the county on what the actual property tax collected will be?
We actually have that information now. We have the preliminary estimate from the county.
So it's an estimate?
It's, right. When do we get the final? Not till November, Mayor.
So if the actual comes in more than the estimate, what happens?
What the county gives us is the assessed valuation estimate. We use it in June to create the budget as we're statutorily required to. Then in November, they provide us the final estimate. Typically, the difference between the two is just property valuation appeals that have been processed. But that final valuation, all it does is it calculates the mill levy. It does not adjust our property taxes that we've levied because those will be approved before the final valuation is approved. So that's why our levy fluctuates slightly each year because we budget it based on the estimated valuation, but it's actually calculated in November based on the final valuation.
Okay. Something you didn't mention that we've discussed, and I want obviously the council to take a look at this too, and that is taking a look at using potentially a million from our planned savings. So today, I believe we have about thirty-two million dollars in reserves.
I believe that's right, about almost thirteen percent of operating expenses.
Right. And, and we've said as a council that our, our bottom line is we have to stay above ten percent. And so if we were able to use a million from that, which is traditionally about what we've been saving over the last four or five years, every year consistently, then that would obviously trim some of the things that we just simply aren't willing to trim currently. Because if you look at that million there and you look at potential changes to the animal shelter and then the way we're doing economic development, between those two items and the planned savings, you're potentially above one point four million. And so I just want my colleagues to know that we ought to take a look at that because that, and we've had this discussion, that would not alter our bond rating.
I'll, if I can share with the council that I've shared with you, Mayor, in our previous discussions, we do, Standard and Poor's and Moody's do talk about our fund balances, and they do express concerns regarding the size of our fund balance. We have stayed, we've grown from about ten percent to the thirteen percent over the last nine years. During the recession, we added very little during that period of time, and we actually treaded water or lost ground because expenses kept going up and we had very little going into reserve. So in the last few years, we've been able to put some money into the fund balance. The caution that I always have, in addition to what the bond rating agencies say, is that if we do that to fund operations, then that will put us behind for the following year by that same amount. So the probably the most prudent use of reserves, if you are going to use those, would be for capital items, one-time, non-recurring capital items. And that way, we won't have that dilemma in the next year of trying to find a million dollars just to stay even with where we were. So those, that's the only caution I have in terms of that. But again, the council does have, I mean, it's ultimately your policy direction in terms of where we go with the budget.
And then the other thing that I would make sure we all understand, even though today, what we're doing is hoping to set the cap, we still have the flexibility to move dollars around even well after today.
You do, in terms of the discussion about the reserve, you do have the ability to use reserves. You are establishing expenditure cap, but we have in that some expend, we already have budgeted, I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but we, yes, you do have that flexibility.
The only other thing I'll say at this point in time to add some clarity to it. I don't believe we're ready until we have further discussion, I can say that I'm not ready at this point to close Clapp. I think there might be some other options to look at that could include golf. And so I just want to make sure people are very clear that, that I'm not ready to close Clapp. So. Any other questions before we go on? We'll open it up to the public after we get through the CIP portion.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so in terms of the capital improvement program, you're all familiar, it's our ten year infrastructure plan. It's the ten year document represents about one point seven million dollars, almost one point eight million, billion dollars, excuse me, in expenditures. Here is the revenue pie chart for the capital improvement program. As you would imagine, the utility revenues are the greatest source of revenue for us. The piece of the pie that is up at the top, the geo-at-large, is our traditional general obligation bond debt. And as you can see, that's really a small part of our total financing for the capital improvement program. In terms of where we spend our dollars, arterials, well, excuse me, utilities are number one, and that would make sense given the revenue sources that we have. But behind that, closely behind that are arterials. So that's all of our street construction projects. And again, I think that's keeping with the priorities that have been established by the council over the last several years. You will note that there, outside of the arterials, there's a section for freeway and a section for bridges. So again, kind of our bread and butter infrastructure improvements. The recommended capital improvement program anticipates a seven point five mil rate to support the debt service fund, and that is down by one mil, and that's the one mil that you moved to help finance the operating budget and the new new police positions. I will note also, and I've got a chart that will show this again, we have a number of benchmarks that are reflective of AAA cities and we try to follow those. This capital improvement program will meet all of the benchmarks that have been approved by the council, including the one that you look at, which is the most closely, and that's the ratio of debt service to property tax revenue. I thought one of the great outcomes from the council retreats was the development of a priority model, a ranking system for capital projects. And this is a reminder that there are four categories in that model. There is the alignment with the Community Investments Plan, which is 20%, and that makes a lot of sense since the purpose of that document is to outline a long-range plan for our public improvements. Also, consistency with other plans, financial considerations, including the opportunity to leverage funds as well as any cost-benefit analysis that's been done on the projects, and then another consideration category, which has a number of criteria. Here is the, probably the chart that you spend the most time looking at whenever we talk about the capital improvement program. And this shows that we had, even though we have increases in 21, starting in 20 up through 2022, in terms of this ratio of GO debt service to property tax revenues, we do not exceed your benchmark of 67%. And we stay well under that. And you see, we actually have some capacity that we start to develop after 2022 into 2023. In terms of the use of our sales tax revenues, you have traditionally put that into freeways and arterials, and this capital improvement program will continue to follow along that line. And this is a, I think this is consistent with what was approved by voters when this was originally brought before them. If I break it down in terms of some categories, public safety, this capital improvement program recommends four remodeled or new police substations, five remodeled fire stations, fire trucks and equipment. If you remember, we changed our model on how we bring that forward. And we now are not turning that equipment, just simply based on number of years of service, but on condition and predicted extra life. And then we have a number of other public safety items that are represented.
Add one more item for clarity back to that.
Yes.
So we had a discussion a year ago about a different approach on equipment replacement that at the time was going to save us like a billion dollars over a 25-year period. Could you bring back at some point in time the chart that shows where that savings starts meeting some of these budget items?
Yes.
Because I know it wasn't immediate.
Right.
But I also know it wasn't out 10 years.
Right, Mayor, and I think I supplied some preliminary information to you on that a little while ago. We'll go ahead and extend that out. We'll show what our savings has been, what we anticipate it will be over the next few years, and then where the savings goes over the life of the document.
And then again, this page here, is that over the 10-year time period that you're calculating the nearly $100 million or $90 million?
Yes. This is all 10-year.
Okay. How much of it is in next year's budget out of this?
In terms of equipment?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
You can get back with us.
We'll get that.
We don't, we don't need that right now. All right. Councilmember Clendenin?
Sorry?
Councilmember Clendenin has a question.
Bob, a couple of times, we've approached the subject in the fire truck equipment, looking at or at least exploring what it would be, what we could do to refurbish some of our trucks.
Right.
Is that also being discussed? Are we looking at that?
Yes, we, that is something we're just, we're reviewing. I think there may be some opportunities there, although I don't have a report back on that. I am familiar with other communities that have done that if, you know, again, depending on what the condition of the vehicle is, the underlying condition of the chassis primarily.
Okay. I'm still really interested in seeing how that could, could save some money in the future, so, thanks.
In terms of street maintenance, reminder that over the 10-year period, we have $78 million built into CIP for residential street maintenance, along with another 36 million in the capital improvement, or, excuse me, the operating budget. So again, that's that renewed commitment to do, to improve the condition of our residential streets. In terms of economic development projects, we have $18 million programmed for the different phases of West Street corridor improvements. And then we have downtown catalyst improvements that will represent about $29 million in investment. In terms of quality of life improvements, we've got the aquatics master plan, the $22 million that you had previously approved for that. We have another $79 million in West Bank improvements. And then we have other cultural facility improvements that represent about $7.5 million. Here is what we've done to date. We've been out to the dabs. We have been in front of the advanced plans committee of MAPC, go to the entire, go to the planning commission on July 26th, and then the council will be asked to adopt the capital improvement program on August 14th. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Councilmember Meisner.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a, a brief note back on your slide 27, you went through that quickly, but for the public, that 97 million on East Kellogg, with, with the, with the help of KDOT and KTA and our staff and many, many people, you know, that, that was reduced from 140 million to 97. So we saved the taxpayers on that redesign and effort and combination, over $40 million in, in costs on that, which was commendable. We've said it before, but it's worth repeating.
Yep. And, and just another clarification on that. So out of the 97 million, the state is paying, I think, 90% of that? Is that part of what the state's building, or is that just our portion?
The 97 million that you see there is the final amount that we need to finish that project. And you're correct, the state contributed a significant portion of that. What we did is we spent the state's money first, so this 97 million represents the last 32 million of state funds, and then the rest of it, 65 million or so, would be picked up by the city. But you are absolutely correct, the state contributed a significant portion.
Yeah, so if we go back to, I suppose, Kellogg and Webb, that's where, and, and the Turnpike, that's where the state?
Yes.
Places their 90% of the, that portion?
Yes, the state built most, or will build most of Kellogg and Webb and actually contribute to Kellogg and Greenwich, and then the city will pick up what's remaining.
But, but my point is, the city isn't picking up that entire 97 million?
No, that is, you are absolutely correct.
But we have to show it all in there, and then we show a revenue stream coming from the state?
Yes, sir, that's exactly correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure people understand. Any other questions before we go out to the public? Okay. Anyone in the audience like to address the counts on this agenda item?
Matt Schulte, firefighter for President, Local 135. Just have a couple of concerns about the budget. First of all, thank you very much for supporting the firefighters and everything you guys do. We understand, we've worked hard to work with you guys to fund us and take care of us. We have some major concerns. We're concerned about the reduction of firefighters to do a pilot program. If they want to do a pilot program about this community response team, I think is what it's called now, we would ask that that money be allocated separate from taking away firefighters. Currently, at the end of 18, we're losing 10 firefighters unless that's changed. I would like to ask that you guys, at this time, go back and say, look, if you want to run your pilot program, let's run it and fund it, but don't, don't take away from firefighters. In our contract, we have 117 firefighters that serve this community at $390,000 a day. And that's a big concern for us. We don't know, Chief Snow doesn't know if this is going to work out. We're not sure. We've still not seen numbers that talk about what this is going to cost. So we're just asking that at this time, if this is what you want to do, we'll look at it, we'll try it, but going for a wholesale change in the way we respond to what, to our, taking our firefighters away is a big concern. And we just ask that, that you would change that and allocate that money somewhere else in the budget for this pilot program that, that we want to try out. And I stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Matt? Councilmember Meisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, have you been involved also in helping us determine the wear and tear on the big apparatuses?
Yes, sir. We've, we've been, I've been in several of those meetings where we're concerned about the wear and tear on the trucks, running the big trucks harder. That's why we have the, the littler trucks, to try to take the wear and tear off of the big trucks.
Well, I, just little things like, you know, the wear and tear, we, we went through this about five years ago. Axles are wearing out on the big, big apparatus. And it's hard for me to answer citizens when they, they see a big apparatus in a, in a Dillon's parking lot or in a, in a small library meeting or something. I mean, have you looked at taking different, smaller units to run errands and, and meetings versus the impact of taking the, the big apparatus and navigating them through small parking lots?
We always try to take the little truck first, even when we're running the errands. We have over 300 hours a year that every fireman has to do for training between the medical, vehicle extrication, fire, all that. We try to send those and be very studious.
I'm not talking about training.
No, but I'm just trying to say for any time we go out, we always want to send the, but we don't have the little trucks at all the stations anymore. We've taken some of those away already today. So that's our concern also in the budget when we look at taking that little truck away, that we're going to put more wear and tear on the bigger trucks that we're running hard today. That's our biggest concern. That's why we say if you want to do the pilot program, okay, but don't shortchange the current fire department now, because we're not sure even if we're going to keep this pilot program. We want to test it out. And so, yeah, we always try to take the little trucks. I, I currently work at Station 12, it has a little truck there. We take it for everything. It goes out first. It's supposed to be the first one out the door unless it's the fire or, you know, the, car wreck. So we always try to do that, it's part of our response model.
I, I clearly agree with real fires and, and auto accidents. I don't agree with running errands, basically. So that's, I guess that's where we differ in opinion. It's hard for me to defend this to citizens when they call me or they run me down about why is this there? And I, I can't, I can't understand it. Maybe I should refer them to you and you can help explain that?
I think it's just, it's just, unfortunately, it's sometimes the cost of doing business that we have to send the big truck, but we don't have that option. We would prefer to send the cheapest vehicle first, you know, to handle those low acuity calls and stuff, but you get a fully trained firefighter that can handle it, you know, because your emergency is your emergency. And you're asking, you call 911 and you ask them to send the appropriate resources and they're doing the best they can.
Sure.
And they push, we don't move unless they push a button and send us. And then that, that's when we decide that we send that.
And then, and the low acuity is, is not, I mean, we went, Councilmember Fry and I went through a lot of that, and I think that was very beneficial, so 911 now does some triage to determine how serious the, the call should be before the button's pushed, as you say.
You are correct.
And that hadn't been gone, that wasn't happening for years. That's just started happening, Brian, what, 18 months ago at the most? So there are improvements that I think that you all could help the whole community, including the city and the county and the region, help improve citizens, because the citizens don't know the difference between, they just want service, as you said. They don't know the difference between who's, who's providing it and what patch they have on their shoulders, things like that. So your, your help could be very beneficial for the community in whole.
And we're always here to help.
Okay.
Councilmember Johnson? Did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, just real quick, what in your opinion would be the impact of these proposed cuts to the fire department?
Well, it's going, according to, you like to use the NFPA 1710 model, where it says we need 15 firemen on scene in eight minutes to have a house fire. You're going to send other trucks, but that first call, we might be able to be there, but the second call, the next medical call, the next car wreck, our response times are going to go down. We're not going to start meeting our response time goals. That's our huge concern for us, only for the citizen's safety and our safety, because now we're going to run the big trucks harder from call to call to call instead of being... The stations were, back in, I believe it was 2000 was the last study for the fire department, 18 years ago. It's been, the city's changed dramatically. We're, we're afraid we're not going to meet our response time goals. We start going to single unit houses. Like I said, while we run this program, let's don't reduce the fire department. Let's keep the numbers 117 a day, you know, so that we can serve the citizens safely.
So, couple of things, and manager may need to help here. One, I think we had something like 20,000, what has now been deemed low acuity calls last year? Do you know the rough number?
So 18,000, I think was the last one we were given.
So 18,000. And so what Councilmember Meisner said, when we get better information now than, than what we had even three years ago, it should enable us to approach those calls with different equipment because we have better information. So instead of running those big trucks to 18,000 calls, as you say, running them hard to low acuity calls, we hope that with better information and the proper vehicles, that we can run the appropriate vehicle to the majority of those 18,000 calls. The second thing, and, and again, the manager may need to help, don't we have like 10 firefighters on a federal grant right now?
Six.
Six firefighters?
It expires, expires December this year.
And so what's the plan when that grant expires? Is there another grant we can apply for?
Mayor, we have applied for a grant, it's not directly for replacement of those positions. What we have been talking about is Station 6, the shared station, which is Station 38 for the county. We looked at the possibility of taking, there's two pumbers there, one is the county's and one is the city's. Talked about the possibility of taking a pumper out at that and just having the staff by the county. Looked at the response numbers and made a decision in this budget not to do that. And so what we are looking at initially is putting a squad at that station so that we have a presence, which would be similar to what we have at other stations, and we'll be able to work, and we've had conversations with county officials regarding that as well. So I think it'll be reflective of the need for that combined city-county service area.
And then I know the chief, and you probably have disagreed, but my understanding is, and we've done this with some of the equipment, we're looking at potentially putting four firefighters on a truck instead of three.
That is correct. This plan recommends putting four firefighters on pumbers, increasing from three.
Okay.
Yes, I, I, I mean, we agree with that. NFPA 1710 talks about it, recommends four in a pumper, four in a truck. And we understand we can't get there overnight. What we're asking here today is that if you want to do the pilot program, that, that money be augmented to run the pilot and see, because we don't have the data yet. 18,000 of those calls were low acuties, they come in, but we're still being sent to what we would call a check and man down, and it ends up being a cardiac arrest. Now we're delaying service to somebody because a citizen called in, called 911, and they sent the, the, the other vehicle, and then we've got to call for more help. You know, our save rate on cardiac arrest is up by 100%. It was 15%, now it's 30. That's where you walk away from the hospital. That's where you walk away from the hospital with no deficits. You know, it's been a really great with the pit crew model that we're doing today. We'll do compressions for over 40 minutes. And that takes, that takes numbers of people, that takes firefighters.
So isn't the county EMT supposed to respond to cardiac arrest?
Well, the ambulance crew does respond. They show up.
The ambulance crew is trained EMTs, right?
Yes, sir. They're doing the heart monitoring, they're pushing all the drugs, they're doing everything else. It's usually the firefighters that are doing all the, the compressions. If it gets really long, they'll jump in, but for the most part, it's us doing the compressions on them. Again, here today, we're just asking that if you're going to move forward with doing the pilot program, we'd like to see it funded separately and that there'll be no changes in the fire department staffing and model while we do this pilot program.
Councilmember Claycomb, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. It's on, on what you're talking about, Mayor. So my understanding of what we want to get to, or what we're trying to get to, is that those, the smaller vehicles would be equipped with EMTs who could respond to cardiac and they would be trained to do CPR. My, okay, I just wanted to make sure. I, I understand what you're asking, Matt. I understand what you're asking for, that, that we'd run this pilot, but, but I just wanted to make clear that, that the plan would be for those EMTs to be able to respond to cardiac or things like that.
And I, and I, that's the unknown. That's that great unknown, and that's what we're going to have to work through and try to do. Again, today, just saying that if you want to try this, but, let's fund it separately. Let's don't make any changes, don't reduce firefighters. Let's don't change what we're doing right now till we can see if it works or not. If it doesn't work, then we're not really reducing services to our citizens and we're not reducing firefighters and we can say, hey, we tried it, it doesn't work. But if it does work, then you can move forward in a plan that, that will have data to back that up.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to address the council? Doesn't appear to be any. So we will bring the discussion back to the bench. Further discussion up here? Again, just to recap a little bit, we're, we're getting ready to set the maximum taxing authority, but we still have the latitude to move dollars around in between different departments, potentially even pulling out of planned savings, as we discussed, and move that around. Initially, you were a little worried that we couldn't do that, that that would be adding to the budget, but you're fine with that now?
Yes. You just, you can't increase your property taxes from this point forward.
Right, but we can move money around, including from savings?
Correct.
If there's no other questions, because we have a lot to drill down, again, all we're setting is the cap at this point. The cap includes the cap for the general fund and the CIP. So I will go ahead and make the motion that the city council set the public hearing on the proposed 2019 budget, including the tax increment financing districts, amendments to the 2018 budget, and the self-supporting municipal improvement district for August 14th, 2018. Authorized publication of the formal public hearing notice, approved first reading of the ordinances for the general tax levy for the city of Wichita, the TIF districts and the SMID district. Authorized staff to make any technical adjustments required to comply with state statute. Set a maximum amount of taxes levied for the city of Wichita at 109, is that only 109 million on setting maximum? $930,446?
Mayor, I apologize. Why don't you read that? Just for us.
Earlier in the agenda report, it has the correct amount of taxes levied. That should read 113,746,846, which is on page one of the agenda report.
Okay. So as corrected in, in that, based on an accepted mill levy of 32.667 mills, just emphasize no change from the 2018 final mill levy rate and an estimated assessed valuation of $3,482,010,752 to round that out. And set the maximum amount of taxes levied for the self-supporting municipal improvement district at $682,991. That based on an estimate levy of 7.149 mills and an estimated assessed valuation of $95,536,616. And that the city council receive and file the 2018 through 2027 proposed capital improvement program.
Could you repeat the motion?
You are. Second, I, the only thing, I would make sure, and if any adjustment needs to be made, so the correction on the, the maximum amount of taxes levied, that correction was in there and that, make sure the other numbers are correct also.
I have a question before we vote.
We don't even have a second.
Yeah, we do.
I did.
All right.
Okay. There is a public hearing on August 7th also, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Right. Do we have more, we have more than one public hearing, don't we?
7th and the 14th.
So just the 7th and the 14th. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public hearing for capital fund program 2018 grant and 2018 to 2022 five-year action plan.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council members, city manager, I'm Brad Snapp on behalf of the Wichita Housing Authority. I have for your consideration today the 2018 capital fund grant with the five-year action plan. United, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development awarded the public housing program $1.3 million for its 2018 capital fund grant. Funds may be used for grant administration, operations, training, architectural services, site, and unit, dwelling unit improvements. This required a 45-day comment period that started June 1. We haven't had any comments, but we will accept comments today. And the tenant advisory board reviewed this in June and approved it as well. HUD allows housing authorities with more than 250 units to transfer 25% of their capital fund grant to operations. And some of the funds from this grant will be used for rad conversion activities. Planned improvements will include a roof for Greenway Manor, security cameras at an apartment community, rehabilitating single-family residences, and installing Energy Star windows. Staff recommends that you open the public hearing and approve the public housing capital fund program 2018 through 2022. And the 2018 annual budget, including the transfer of 25% to the public housing operations and authorize the submittal to HUD. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions at this point, and want to recognize Andrew Martin again. And Andrew, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. If there's no questions, we'll go out to the public. Anyone in the public like to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. And if there's no additional discussion, Andrew, would you like to make the motion since this is just a housing item? Or I can make it, whatever you prefer. I would move that the Wichita Housing Authority Board conduct the public hearing, approve the Wichita Housing Authority Public Housing Capital Fund Program for 2018 to 2022. Annual budget and five-year action plan allow the transfer of 25% of the annual grant to public housing operations and authorize its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Second. We have a motion and a second, and again, we will record our vote electronically. Andrew will record hers by voice. Are there any other questions, concerns? Did we miss anything? Cast your vote. Motion passes 8-0. Thank you. Andrew, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, next item, and, and because we're still on policies for public housing, does Andrew still vote on this next item, right? Okay.
Public housing smoke-free policy.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council, city manager. My name is Logan Bradshaw and I'm a management analyst for the Wichita Housing Authority. And today, the Housing Authority comes to you seeking approval of the public housing smoke-free policy. In November of 2016, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, adopted a rule that requires every PHA or public housing agency that administers a public housing program to also implement a smoke-free housing policy. These policies are to go into effect no later than July 30th of this year. HUD requires PHAs to ban the use of prohibited tobacco products, which I'll go on to define shortly, in all public housing living units, in all indoor common areas, in public housing authority administrative office buildings, and in any outdoor area up to 25 feet from public housing and administrative office buildings. The Wichita Housing Authority opened a public comment period on June 1st. Prohibited tobacco items are any items that involve the ignition and burning of tobacco leaves, such as cigarettes, cigars, and pipes. This also includes water pipes, sometimes referred to as hookahs. HUD, the HUD rule leaves e-cigarettes up to the discretion of the public housing agency. The policy before you at this time does permit e-cigarettes based on tenant feedback. The Wichita Housing Authority's policy is obviously inclusive of all HUD requirements, but our policy also extends the HUD requirements for outdoor no-smoking areas to 25 feet from any outdoor common area as well. So any outdoor common area, that could be a patio, a parking lot, or any type of shared space. The no-smoking zone has to extend 25 feet from those outdoor common areas as well. Enforcement of the policy will follow standard procedures for civil lease infractions. As encouraged by HUD, graduated enforcement framework will be implemented. And this graduated enforcement framework will also include links to supportive services for those tenants who might need them or want them. Basically, our policy applies to anyone who steps foot onto a public housing property. So this would include all of our tenants and any of the visitors, as well as any of the Wichita Housing Authority employees, contractors, volunteers, or vendors. Everyone is required to follow the policy. Public housing tenants over the age of 18 are required to sign the smoke-free lease addendum. And what this addendum does is formally add this to their lease, as well as explain the policy and certifying that they are going to come into compliance with this policy. And we have to have all of those lease addendums signed by July 30th of 2018, the implementation date. So far, we've had nine tenant meetings across all four of our asset management projects. These nine meetings yielded 135 tenants in attendance. And overall, from those 135 tenants, we received generally favorable feedback from tenants in these meetings. Especially, we got very positive feedback from tenants who live in the more concentrated multifamily properties across AMPS 1 and AMP 2. Additionally, we're going to plan to have six meetings, and the focus of these meetings will be linking tenants with cessation services that are available in the Wichita area. The Kansas Academy of Family Physicians representative, Tara Nolan, I believe she's here today, is going to be assisting with tenant meetings for AMPS 3 and 4. Those are our scattered, single-family site properties, with the provision of cessation information to our tenants at those meetings. Additionally, we've worked with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, or KDHE. They've assisted us by providing canquet signs and materials for provision and posting at our multifamily properties, as well as for provision at our tenant meetings. Staff has been attending and will continue to attend a NARO webinar series that promotes best practices and implementation of this HUD rule. These webinars are designed to help public housing agencies transition and maintain successful, smoke-free public housing environments. We don't anticipate any impact to the general fund, but we do anticipate a positive impact to the Wichita Housing Authority budget due to the decrease in maintenance, cleaning, and redecorating costs, as well as the cost of fire insurance on the properties. The law department has reviewed our smoke-free policy as to form. So with that, we would recommend that you conduct the public hearing, close the 45-day public comment period, as well as review and approve the smoke-free housing policy for the Wichita Housing Authority Section 9 Public Housing Program. And with that, we'll stand for any questions.
So a couple of questions, so that I'm clear on this. The Housing Authority is recommending a smoke-free or a ban on cigarette smoke, but not on the, what do we call them?
E-cigarettes. Electronic cigarettes. At this time, the policy does not include e-cigarettes.
And you said it's because of input that you received at these nine meetings you attended?
HUD leaves the discretion up to the housing authorities whether or not to include e-cigarettes. And at the tenant meetings, even the people who were very excited to see smoking go away, they thought that allowing for e-cigarettes could help make the transition easier for other individuals, but that is something that could be changed here today.
And I get it. It can be changed because we have that discretion.
Yes.
To go against the Housing Authority if we so choose.
Yes, sir.
Well, the recommendation of the Housing Board, I'm sorry. So you also mentioned there's a reduction in potential insurance because of the change in this.
Yes.
Does that reduction in insurance include continuing, if we continue to allow e-cigarettes?
I believe so. Housing authorities who have implemented the HUD rule have seen decreased costs associated with fire insurance on their properties. We would have to look into and research specific housing authorities that do continue e-cigarettes to determine the decreased cost of their fire insurance.
And then you mentioned multifamily dwellings, which we have, but do we also have some single-family dwellings?
Yes. This policy applies to all four of our asset management projects. Asset management project 3 and 4 consist of 352 single-family houses that this policy still applies to.
So I, I fully understand requirement by law to ban cigarettes, but could we have a separate policy for e-cigarettes on multifamily tenants versus single-family housing?
The HUD rule does allow us to exercise discretion on our policies concerning e-cigarettes, so yes.
So I probably understand a little bit of the issue with e-cigarettes. If you're in multifamily setting where you're still maybe potentially encroaching on others, but in a single-family setting, if, if you're telling me that our insurance rates would still potentially go down because we're banning cigarettes, I'm not sure I would have too much heartburn to allow e-cigarettes in a single-family setting. But we can have that discussion here in a minute. Councilmember Claycomb?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we would really want to check that on fire insurance because my understanding is that the rates would not decrease with e-cigarettes, so if we still allowed that. So I think we would have.
So can we find that out?
Yes, we can do research on the associated fire insurance rates where cigarettes are prohibited, but e-cigarettes are not. Yes, we can do that analysis.
Okay. What, what was the response from tenants? You, you said it was, I, I don't know if you used the word overwhelming, that they preferred to continue with e-cigarettes. I mean, was it... I mean, was it two people that said that? I mean, kind of capture that.
So, e-cigarettes were not commented on by every single tenant that attended this meeting. And though overall, the responses we got were favorable, that was from the people who actually showed up at our meetings. So, and generally, we feel that the people who showed up at our meetings might not be smokers, so this policy really is helping them. But as far as the e-cigarettes go, I remember a few comments, especially at our high rises, that people thought that the transition would be easier for those individuals who do smoke if they were allowed to transition to e-cigarettes first. With that being said, people didn't seem to be as disturbed by e-cigarettes as they were current cigarette smoking.
Okay.
I have meeting notes.
Did you have another question, Counselor Member?
No, I'm fine now. Right now.
Counselor Member Clinton?
Mayor, I would tend to agree on the single-family dwellings, in your opinion, but I still have a concern that any children that would be in the house be subjected, you know, to the whatever's in the air, residual impact of whatever's in the air, even from e-cigarettes. So, I think we need to take a look at that before making a decision. Well, I mean, I guess in the future. We have to make a decision today, so.
So, we don't have to make a decision today, do we?
We have a deadline that.
We always have deadlines.
You could adopt the policy and ask us to bring back e-cigarette recommendation to you in August. That way, we can meet the basic requirement. Or you could approve it with e-cigarette ban with a later implementation. We were going to have a problem in terms of meeting the HUD deadline and getting the addendums done for tenants, because we've already done all that work.
Right.
So, we can get it out to them July 30th. So, we're going to ask for later implementation of e-cigarette if that was going to be made by the council anyway, so. So, we could bring it back as an amendment. You're allowed to amend your policy at any time, so we could bring that with some more data, whatever you ask for.
Appreciate it. That adds some options to that, that we can look at. Counselor Mayor Blue Ball?
Thank you, Mayor. Logan, you may have mentioned this earlier, but I just want to understand, is this only public housing owned by the City of Wichita, or is this privately owned? What about privately-owned housing subsidized by Section 8? Does that apply to the same rules?
Yes, so, or actually, no. So, this is only pertaining to our public housing. Though the Wichita Housing Authority Board governs the Housing Choice Voucher and the public housing programs, this HUD rule only applies to public housing owned by the City of Wichita.
So, if you're on subsidized housing?
It's up to the privately-owned.
It's up to the private.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Just a question regarding public smoking in other public facilities. This is probably more for legal. What is our policy now? Is it up to 25 feet from public buildings, or is it less? It's 25 feet? And so, I noticed in our prior action, we approved building smoking shelters at four facilities. Are they all going to be at 25 feet and beyond? They going to be past the 25-feet limit?
Well, they're going to have to be if it. Okay.
You're talking about ones that are in this policy?
No, in the prior action that we just had, there were four shelters that we approved, smoking shelters in McLean Manor, Greenway Manor, Rosa Gragg, and Bernice Hutchinson.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that those are going to be beyond the 25-foot limit.
Yes.
We have that room.
Yes. We have maps up at all of our multifamily facilities, showing our residents where a smoking will be allowed on the property, if any. One of our properties, the 25-feet threshold extends all the way out to the property line.
Just want to make sure we're consistent across all of our public buildings.
Yes, sir.
Of the 25-feet rule.
All right. Any other questions? We haven't, not gone out to the public yet, but any other questions? All right. We'll go out to the public. Anyone like to address the counsel on this agenda item?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Tara Nolan. I am the Coalition Coordinator for Tobacco-Free Wichita Coalition. I want to thank you for giving me a moment to speak about this. Tobacco-Free Wichita has been involved in a smoke-free housing initiative since about 2009, where we assist commercial property owners with adopting smoke-free policies for their residents. In that time, we've been able to partner with the City of Wichita Fire Department and also the Public Housing Authority, who have helped us develop our toolkit, which includes policy development, implementation, and enforcement for those properties. And we're currently about 40% of the commercial properties in Wichita actually have policies that cover at least one residential building. As part of this smoke-free housing initiative, I actually had the opportunity to attend the White House convening on the HUD ruling that was discussed when Mr. Snap was up here. And this was a meeting for stakeholders to give recommendations on what should be included in that ruling. A couple of things that have already been mentioned here were discussed that day, including the Section 8 housing, as Counselor Member Blue Ball brought up. And Tobacco-Free Wichita obviously supports including the Section 8 housing in something like this, although it wasn't in the final deeming rule. Our hope is that with the renovations, if there are any properties that are under the control of the City of Wichita at this time in public housing, that aren't included in this policy, that after renovations are done, that you might consider adding those under the smoke-free protection. The other thing that was heavily discussed were e-cigarettes. And Tobacco-Free Wichita recommended that that be included in the final ruling. As Ms. Bradshaw discussed, that was not, it was recommended but not required. There are several reasons why Tobacco-Free Wichita supports this, and that's because, first of all, they're not a recommended cessation device. So, though it might help the tenants with the transfer into a smoke-free environment, it's not the best idea for cessation. And this is a recommendation brought down by the U.S. Preventative Task Force, which is a group of physicians who review research studies to see what's the best policies for patients. Also, there is a potential for exposure to chemicals in the air. Some different research studies were done on the air quality after being around someone smoking an e-cigarette, and they were to found volatile organic compounds, which are basically bad things for you to breathe in the air, as well as nicotine at the same levels as a person who is around someone smoking a traditional cigarette. People with compromised lung issues or heart issues, which we know in public housing, we have a high proportion of people with some health issues, are really sensitive to things like the nicotine being in the air, which can negatively affect their health. There's also safety concerns with electronic smoking devices. I don't know if you all recall, but there was a fire in Derby where a man had an e-cigarette battery in his pocket that caught fire, and he was harmed pretty extensively. Our work with the Wichita Fire Department, they've talked about the potential for fire risk in any type of dwelling where the e-cigarettes are allowed, simply because of the batteries and the chemical, I'm sorry, electrical reaction when someone is smoking an electronic cigarette. These have also been known to explode for unknown reasons, but they have done damage to structures as far as walls and things like that when the explosion occurs. The biggest reason also, or one of the biggest reasons we support this is because of enforcement issues. Things like smoke-free housing policies are seen as good neighbor policies, where you're expecting the tenants to let someone know if somebody is violating a policy, as well as self-enforcing, so telling people, hey, you can't smoke here. When you do things like that and allow e-cigarettes to be in a large environment like a multifamily housing, you're inviting a lot more headaches for the property managers. You're inviting disputes between tenants. And it's just, and it's better for everyone if they're just not allowed in the first place, so no one confuses it with a traditional cigarette. So, that is what I have for now. I thank you all for considering the smoke-free housing policy, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the counsel on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring the discussion back to the bench. So, after hearing from staff that there might still be some confusion, I would like for us to address the immediate policy concern and have staff bring back a potential addendum or amendment that would address potentially banning all e-cigarettes, depending on the information, or maybe a modified approach. But I need to know if there is an issue, as stated, with potential cost to insurance. And then, you know, again, I get it. It's nice to have some feedback, but I get the intrusion when you're in a multifamily dwelling versus single-family dwelling. And so, I'd like to see us address just the policy and come back with more information that may tweak that with some kind of amendment. Counselor Member Claycomb?
So, I have a question. When is the timing of the RAD renovations? When are those supposed to be finished?
I believe late 2020 for all of them, but I believe Amps 1 and 2 will take place first and then move on to Amps 3 and 4. But I would have to double-check on that for you.
Okay. But some, but it is, so what would happen is, this policy would go into effect in the multifamily and the single-family, the one that's been approved, or that you're asking us to approve today. Then, at some point in the multifamily, we're going to move those folks out so we can renovate and then move them back in, right?
This is correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify that, because if we're going to spend all that money on renovations, it would be nice to move those folks back into a truly smoke-free environment, and if we have till 2020, that would, not that I want to take that much time, Mayor, but that would give us some time to do that. The one thing I would ask, if we are going to ask for, if we're going to look at coming back with e-cigarettes later, is that I would ask that staff work with the Tobacco-Free Wichita Coalition with their Smoke-Free Housing Authority, because that includes all the people, particularly our Wichita Fire Department, who can actually help us make a good recommendation on this.
We can do that.
Okay.
So, did I hear you correctly that the Wichita Fire Department would prefer we ban e-cigarettes also?
That's what Tara said, yes. And that is.
Okay.
The representative that I work with, yes.
All right. Any other questions? So, at this point, the staff recommended action simply bans tobacco products?
Yes, the prohibited tobacco product.
And does not address e-cigarettes?
Currently, no, not in its current state.
Okay. Then I would move that we take the staff recommended action, but I would include in here to direct staff to bring back a potential policy that addresses e-cigarettes.
Do you have a time limit?
Yeah, let's do a time.
So, do we really need a time limit?
Yes.
August 30th.
So, so, Madam Clerk, you said even if we address e-cigarettes, you were going to try and delay the implementation of that?
September 1 would be the soonest we could do it.
So.
In terms of implementation.
So, why don't you just bring them back to the first meeting in September, which gives us plenty of time to have discussion?
That's your motion?
Yes. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Again, we'll record ours electronically. Andrew, you'll record yours with the voice.
So, in that, I don't know if it has to be in the motion, but I do want that, I do want that, that they work with the Smoke-Free Housing Initiative.
So, that doesn't need to be in the motion.
Okay.
But staff is directed to work with them, and.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Thank you. Andrew, thank you for sticking with us all day. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Brandon Johnson to attend the NBC LEO Conference in Hollywood, Florida, July 23rd through 28th, 2018.
Brandon's traveling more than Delta Airlines. I would move that we approve the travel for Brandon Johnson to attend the NBC LEO Conference in Hollywood, Florida, July 23rd through the 28th of 2018, and I guess we'll include round-trip travel.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, next item.
Councilmember, comments and appointments?
Any appointments today? I do have the T-Bid group that I'm going to read off here in a minute, but any other appointments that we need to make today? Counselor Mayor Blue Ball?
I'd like to appoint Brian Held to the Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board.
Okay. Any other comments? Anything you missed out on? All right. I also have a number of appointments. This is for the T-Bid Board, and this was brought to us by recommendation from Visit Wichita, who provides the list of names. And so, we are, here's the list, which is reappointing Scott Raggett of the Drury Plaza, Mike Aaron of La Quinta Inn, Michelle Stein of Wichita Marriott, Jim Faith of Empress Bank, and Kathy Erickson of JP Yagan. And then, we would have two new appointments, Jim Corrock from Aloft Hotel and Jennifer Finlay from Hotel at Old Town. And that, again, is for the T-Bid Board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the appointments. Any other discussion? Cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. And I think the only thing left to do is adjourn, and I would move that we adjourn today's council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn. Anyone want to discuss adjourning? Cast your vote.
Counselor Member Blue Ball, thank you.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.